Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome members of the council, staff, and members of the public to our November tenth council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to call upon Mrs. Pearson for the roll call, please.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara, Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Loosley.
Present.
And that is Quorum worship.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And at this time, I'd like to ask you for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, the Odoa, and the Podwatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petrolia is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty, number twenty-nine of eighteen twenty-seven. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully within the land and the Indigenous people who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And at this time, I'd like to ask council if there's anyone would like to declare a conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork for the clerk. Seeing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Field, Mayor Field, and Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to adopt as presented the agenda of the November tenth, two thousand twenty-five regular session of council.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the minutes of our regular council meeting held on October twenty-seventh. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor. Move by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to adopt a circulated minutes of the regular session of council held on October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? That'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion, opposed, that motion carries. Excuse me. That'll take us to the adoption of a public meeting held on October twenty-seventh regarding an official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment application for phases four to eight of Country View Estates. There's a motion before you. You'll have a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt.
And Counselor Welsh, she'll be able to see her hand as well.
Okay.
Just for your notion, Mrs. Ellsworth will also raise her hand as a backup to Counselor Welsh.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive and file as information notes of the October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five public information session held on October twenty-seventh.
Any discussion regarding those minutes? If not, all those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to our moment of reflection. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand. Please be seated. Thank you. That'll take us to council's round table announcements. And tonight, we're going to be starting with Counselor Welsh. Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
I have nothing to report from a very snowy nation's capital.
Okay, thank you. That'll take us to Counselor Hyatt, please.
Nothing to share, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patel.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Maybe because we just met two weeks ago. Deputy Mayor Field.
Just one thing through you. I attended the Senatop service on November second and just encourage everyone to, if they can make it, to the Senatop tomorrow.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. I do have a few items. The budget review team with staff prepared the two thousand twenty-six municipal budget on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, for all of council's consideration. It will be dealing with that on November twenty-fifth. I attended the Hydrogen Innovation Fund announcement by the Associate Minister of Energy Intensive Industries by the Honorable Sam Ostehoff on Friday, October thirty-first, at the Western Sarny Lampton Research Park. MPP Bob Bailey and Mr. Matthew Sladawoski, CEO for Sarny Lampton Economic Partnership, also spoke at that event. I walked in the Royal Canadian Legion Brands two sixteen parade from the Legion to Victoria Park and laid the wreath on behalf of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia on Sunday, November the second. It was great weather with a good turnout and a great program. I also attended the signings unveiling at the corner of Ignatifna Street and Petrolia Line on Monday, November third. The sign recognizes the importance of Ignatifna Street for veterans returning from war. Following the Second World War, Ignatifna Street in Petrolia was designated as part of the federal initiative support returning veterans under this program. Eligible veterans were granted parcels of land along the street. Special thanks to Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Deputy Operations Clerk, and her staff for organizing the event. I also attended a meeting with the family health team with Mrs. Sarah Milner on Tuesday, November fourth, at the Central Lampton Health Team located at forty-one thirty Glenview Road. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, was also in attendance. And I took part in the Lampton County Council meeting held on Wednesday, November fifth, and will continue to keep council informed. I'll move us on now to correspondence for information. We have items A to H.
And your worship, I have had a request to withdraw item D for separate motion.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go from A to each and with except for item D. So I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor. Deputy Mayor Field.
Yep.
Seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please, to eliminate D.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive and file correspondence items ten A through H excluding item D.
Any other questions from council? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to item D. And Counselor Welsh, I'll let you go ahead and speak to that, please.
Yes, I would like to move with a second or if possible that the council of the town of Petrolia, for all the reasons stated in the resolution we received, support the motion from the city of Cambridge for the province of Ontario to provide adequate protection against malicious and excessive rent increases for all units occupied for residential purposes while maintaining the ability for landlords of viable and sustainable business. And further, that the motion be forwarded to the premier local MPP Bob Bailey and other Ontario municipalities.
Okay, and you've moved that, Counselor Welsh?
Yes, I have.
Need a second or for that, please? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. And I think you've heard the motion. I don't think we need it read again. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us on to correspondence for consideration. There is none at this time. There are no delegations tonight. That'll move us on to the community announcements, recognitions, and awards. And you have the council announcements dated November the tenth. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive as information only at the November tenth, two thousand twenty-five community announcements as presented.
Any questions from council? And as usual, Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, worship. I have a little update. The Remembrance Day service is listed at eleven AM. It's actually starting at ten fifty AM. So maybe show up around a quarter, two or so to make sure you're on time.
Thank you. And I was going to remind everyone at the end of the meeting for that, but I'm glad you told me, so ten fifty. Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions from council? Can you read it?
It has been read, yes.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us now, this is the first opportunity for the public to address council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the reports, motions required by the departments. First, we have a finance report from Mrs. Annette Strand, Deputy Treasurer regarding the two thousand and twenty-four financial information return. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
I'm just putting it on the floor for discussion.
Pardon me?
You asked for someone to put it on the floor.
Oh, I did, sorry. Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Patel. Thank you. Sorry about that. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive and file the report of the Deputy Treasurer dated the tenth day of November, two thousand twenty-five, regarding the two thousand twenty-four financial information return, also known as the FIR.
All right, before I, I was going to ask you to come forward. Annette, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to thank you for getting this done. And I also see only sixty-one percent had filed this by, what, November the fourth? Which means we're ahead of the pack, and I'd love to hear that. Hang on for a sec. Is there any questions for Mrs. Strand from council while she's here? Okay, if not, thank you for coming and thank you for your report. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Again, we have a report from Mrs. Annette Strand, Deputy Treasurer regarding the two thousand twenty-six municipal fee schedule. I'll ask for a move in a second to put.
And your worship, I actually have two motions that have been submitted in relation to this outside of the motion. So they would be an amendment to the current motion.
Okay, so we'll do the current motion first. I'll get a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, and then we'll listen to the, or we'll put the amendments on for council's consideration.
Okay, so that motion would be that the council, the town of Petrolia, adopt the report of the Deputy Treasurer dated the tenth day of November, two thousand twenty-five, regarding the two thousand twenty-six municipal fee schedule, and that the two thousand twenty-six municipal fee schedule, and this would where the as amended would come in, be approved as amended and come into force and effect the first day of January, two thousand twenty-six. So we'll need to hear those amendments.
Okay, let's hear the first amendment.
Okay, so the first amendment is submitted by Counselor Hyatt, and that is where, whereas the rate schedule for the water rates proposes a four percent increase to both fixed and variable rates, therefore be it resolved that the council, the town, the council, the corporation of the town of Petrolia, approve a four percent increase to the fixed portion only with no increase to the variable rates. And that is moved by Counselor Hyatt.
All right, I'll need a second or for that so we can put it on the floor for discussion. Seconded by Counselor Patel. Okay, now, just so I'm clear on that, the rate we have now, is that the fifteen dollar rate? Mr. Charlebois?
Plus the four percent, yes.
That's he's recommending.
That, all he's recommending, we keep that part, but not add to the very.
Right, okay. Deputy Mayor Field.
So I believe that there is some discussion both ways that I know the fee schedule is part of the budget process, but with a specific fee for a ball field or something, I don't feel that it impacts. I do have question that it impacts the budget substantially, not knowing that. I guess what my ask would be is that this fee schedule discussion be moved to our meeting on the, was it the twenty-fifth? That we could actually discuss it. If it's not deemed to be part of the overall budget, that it would just be a regular motion of council, not one that would require five people to take it. I think just this discussion needs to move to that meeting. I know we have a couple councillors that are in here that would likely have input into it as well. I just don't know what that impact overall is. And I don't know if Rick has those numbers off the top of his head, but I feel that moving that to that meeting would be the right thing to do. But that's just my comment.
Deputy Mayor Field, are you looking at maybe considering tabling that then?
Tabling, we.
It'll come to our table. We can set the date for the next, our budget meeting on November twenty-fifth.
I will oppose tabling, but if you want to defer it till the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I hate the word table, too. I would defer it to that meeting. I think Liz has a question, too.
Liz, go ahead.
Does it need to go to the actual budget meeting? Can we just have it, the fee schedule, at the next council meeting with a report?
Yeah, I'll ask the clerk to clarify that, but I think we've already, it's already in the budget now that's going on the twenty-fifth, and I think you have to make amendments to that. Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
Yes, through your worship, it was a good question. Didn't think of it till this afternoon. So I reached out to MFOA, which is the Financial Officers' Organisation, and their senior policy person to ask the question because, as we know, our draft budget with the Budget Review Team has already been, it's already fixed, and we're having the meeting on the twenty-fifth of November. There's a, this strong mayor processes, this is the first year. There's still a lot of unanswered questions. And one of the unanswered questions is exactly this. Does council have the right to or authority to change the budget once the budget's been presented? So it's fuzzy. Deferring it to the twenty-fifth of November is probably a good idea.
I think that's, that was probably the most appropriate thing we should do, just to clarify this. I know that the rules are gray here, but if you would move that to defer it.
I would move to defer.
Could I get a second or to defer it?
Will you read the second half? Because you'll probably want to defer that as well.
Well, we'll do one at a time. Should we just do one at a time? So we'll do the first one. So you're seconding that to defer it?
I'm going to defer until budget.
Then I'll call the motion that the first amendment be deferred until the twenty-fifth. All those in favor of deferring that? Okay, that motion carries. So that will be deferred. Now let's hear the second amendment, please, Mrs. Pearson.
So that second amendment is that whereas the rate schedule for sewer rates proposes a four percent increase, therefore be it resolved that the council, the corporation of the town of Petrolia, approve a three percent increase to the sewer rate.
I'd recommend that council defer that as well.
Well, I would.
Would you like to make that motion, Deputy Mayor Field? Okay, seconded by Counselor Patel. Just so we're clear, so the second amendment will be deferred until November twenty-fifth. Any other discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of deferring that? That motion carries. Now that'll take us back to the original motion, I believe. Is there any questions regarding the?
So the original motion was to approve, so that won't be able to move forward. So the original motion, those amendments that came forward will supersede the original motion. So that'll carry forward to the twenty-fifth.
Including the fee schedule?
It's all, the fee schedule is part of the conversation.
So we'll do that. All right, so we'll move on to the next. We have a report from Jayla Saunders, Financial Analysis and Senior Tax Administrator, regarding the council endorsement of the Community Building Retrofit Initiative, which is the Green Municipal Fund grant approval. There's a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to endorse the report of the financial analyst and senior tax administrator Jayla Saunders dated November tenth, two thousand twenty-five, and that council direct staff to apply to the Community Buildings Retrofit Initiative, known as the Green Municipal Fund, to retrofit the YMCA facility.
Well, I'd certainly like to pass on to the CAO that Jayla be thanked for preparing that grant. And I'll, I'll just open it up to council first. So then I'm going to ask maybe Mrs. Bullock if she'd like to have anything to add. Any questions from council first? No questions? Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add regarding that?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Charlebois.
Yes, through your worship, but so the, our community centre needs a new roof, new HVAC, and we'd like to switch to LED lighting to modernize the lighting and save annual operating cost. So we've been looking for a grant. And if you, if council remembers, we did a energy feasibility study over the past year and a half, two years. And that was the first step, the precursor to being able to apply for this grant. This is only the second grant out of, I don't know how many grants we've applied for in twelve years. It's a lot. That actually needs a council endorsement before we actually apply for the grant. This is applying for the actual capital grant money.
And as council is aware, I have, and for the public, I've always, I've directed staff to apply for as many grants as possible rather than having to wait for council's approval each time. All right, any other questions from council or call the vote? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer regarding the summary of the federal budget, two thousand twenty-five, Canada Strong. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive and file the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the tenth day of November, two thousand twenty-five, regarding summary information about the federal budget, two thousand twenty-five, Canada Strong.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mr. Charlebois, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, through your worship, is as council can see through this report, as the federal government says, it's a transformational budget with all the stuff that's happening with the US administration. Canada has to pivot. And this is the budget that's going to help the country pivot. There's a lot of infrastructure money in there that municipalities have different grant programs that will come out. The, usually what happens is it goes from the federal government, and then it'll go in the provincial government and the province. I'm not sure if they'll wait till the spring when they normally do their two thousand twenty-six budget or whether they'll react sooner. But we're, staff are watching for these new grants that are going to come out.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. And I, too, I'm hoping that there'll be some money coming to the municipality, whether it be for housing or something else. All right, did we read that motion?
I have read it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to operations.
And your worship, I do have an amendment to this motion as well.
Okay, so you will do the motion first.
The amendment first, please.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I have that. It's been submitted by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Field. Oh, yes, sorry. Okay. There we go. I have that to read from Deputy Mayor. There it is. Deputy Mayor Field, so whenever you're ready with a second.
Okay.
I'll read if you wish.
I think you should read it first, and then I'll ask for a second or so they know what they're tackling.
Whereas the town of Petrolia is not responsible under the Resource Recovery and Circular Economy Act of two thousand sixteen for recycling collection regulations in the town of Petrolia. And whereas council has heard many concerns from residents around the recent change implemented by CMO. Now therefore, the council, the town of Petrolia, provide information to MPP Bob Bailey as this award of contract has created a reduction in service to town residents. And that council requests that the recycling collection service as contracted by CMO be reviewed as our service level has decreased from cart collection to blue box collection. And that a copy of this motion be forwarded to the Honorable Todd McCarthy, Minister of the Environment, Conservation and Parks and to Circular Materials, Ontario.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I'll need a second or for that to put that on the floor for further discussion.
Just have her hand up as well.
Oh, Counselor Welsh, okay, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll open it up for discussion. I will just mention to council, I, too, was quite concerned about this and felt that was a definite reduction in service going from a bin to a blue box. I did contact MPP Bob Bailey. He called me today, and he's also concerned with it. I've also just forwarded a text to the minister, and I will send a copy to council just for your information. But I think this is important to come from all of council, to go to the appropriate people. There's no other discussion. I'll call the vote. Oh, there's Counselor Welsh.
Is it, is it true that the businesses will not be picked up by MTA also?
I'll ask Mr. Thompson, can you speak to that, please?
Your worship, the residential properties are eligible. Commercial properties are ineligible. So we don't have to pick, we as the town of Petrolia don't have to pick up recycling from businesses, but we're making the choice to continue to serve them in picking up recycling. Therefore, MTA will do residential because they're eligible, and Waste Management will continue to do the ineligible properties, which is the commercial businesses. So they will keep the carts because it's still under waste management.
I'm pleased to hear that. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
I'm wondering if the mover of that motion would consider also including in that that not only do we have a reduction in service for our residents, but also that our recycling pickup should be consistent and include the businesses. I believe we've seen correspondence concerning this from other municipalities at previous council meetings.
So I'll just work with the mover on that. So that would be, and.
I think if the mover and the seconder would agree with incorporating that.
In that businesses being included as well.
As long as the, I guess my only thing through you is that the, they're not going to go to bins. I hope the businesses, or don't go to the boxes, right?
Right.
If we put that in there, is there a concern that that they include it and they include it with the current contract for bins? Like the, not roly bins, but blue boxes.
Yeah, I wonder if we're going to complicate the issue. Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
I believe it's been fairly consistent across the province that commercial properties are not getting, are not being included in these new RFPs that are put out and that it is only residential properties. So I think it's just, it's a concern that's also been reflected by other municipalities. I don't imagine it will complicate ours. I mean, we could make a, I could make a secondary motion to include the commercial properties if that helps.
Okay, I'm okay with.
Is the mover and seconder okay with that? Who is the second or for that?
That was Counselor Welsh.
Counselor Welsh.
Counselor Welsh? You're okay with that? All right, we'll make that kind of amendment. I will ask the clerk when she has time to sort this out to read it back, please.
So that motion now is whereas the town of Petrolia is not responsible under the Resource Recovery and Circular Economy Act for recycling collection regulations in the town of Petrolia. And whereas council has heard many concerns from residents around the recent change implemented by CMO. Now therefore, the council, the town of Petrolia, provide information to the MPP Bob Bailey as this award of contract has created a reduction in service to town residents and that commercial properties be included to keep consistency with concerns across other municipalities. And that council requests that the recycling collection service be contracted by, CM, as contracted by CMO, be reviewed as our service level has decreased from cart collection to blue box collection. And that a copy of this motion be forwarded to the Honorable Ted McCarthy, Minister of the Environment, Conservation and Parks and to Circular Materials, Ontario.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? So we're voting on this amendment first. Okay, all those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Now, do we have another one?
We do have the original, yeah.
Oh.
The primary motion as amended.
All right. Did we have a move or a second or for that?
Not yet, your worship.
All right, I'll ask for a move or a second or for the actual motion before you. And that'll be as amended. Move by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive and file this information report as amended from Mike Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the updated recycling collection process in the town of Petrolia.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us on, do we have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, regarding the two thousand twenty-five accessibility compliance report? I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion before you on for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that's for the council, the town of Petrolia, to receive and file the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated November tenth, two thousand twenty-five, regarding the two thousand twenty-five accessibility compliance report.
Any discussion from council? Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add on this one?
Not at this time, your worship, thank you.
Okay, I'm pleased that you submitted that report. Okay, I'm pleased that you submitted that report, so we've done everything we need to do. Great. Call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Again, we have another report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities regarding the Ontario Trillium Foundation Grant for bleachers and batting cage. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the director of parks, recreation and facilities dated November 10th, 2025 regarding the Ontario Trillium Foundation Grant Application for Bleachers and Batting Cage.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Bullock for obtaining that $42,500 that went towards the batting cages and bleachers. Is that correct? And that was for 100%?
Yes, this grant covers 100% of the grant and, uh, Jayla Saunders, Ms. Jayla Saunders was a big part in applying for that as well.
Okay, see that she gets congratulated as well, please, uh, Mr. Charlebois. Thank you. Alright, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on now. This is for the second opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. Anyone wishing to address council? Okay, and we will move on now then to other business. We have a motion from councillor Hyatt regarding the recalculation of development charges fees. And the notice of motion was presented at the October 27th, 2005 Regular Meeting of Council. And I will ask the clerk to read that and then I'll ask councillor Hyatt to speak to that if that's okay.
And that is where the town of Petrolia recently received two grants for the Petrolia line water main upgrade. And whereas the development charges background study forecasted zero grants for this project. Now therefore be it resolved that the council, the corporation of the town of Petrolia request the staff review the calculated development charges for the development areas one, two, and three, and bring forth an amendment to the bylaw schedule to reflect development charges as applicable due to the grant funding.
Okay, and, um, councillor Hyatt, you're making that motion. I'll need a seconder and then I'll call upon you to speak to it. Seconded by councillor Welsh. Alright, councillor Hyatt, go ahead.
Uh, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's, you know, a, a large portion of the, of the cost is going to be funded by granting, so in my opinion, it's not right, uh, to include that in the development charges. Uh, the new homeowners would not need to pay for it. The existing homeowners don't need to pay for it, so uh, it only makes sense that those costs be removed, uh, from the DC study.
Okay, any other questions for councillor or deputy mayor field? Go ahead.
And thank you through you, um, to, uh, CAO. Is it not a regular process for us to evaluate and go through this? Um, and I guess the second part to my question is, what is the timeframe for this? And would it be when the project is done?
Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
Uh, yes, through your worship, um, correct. Everybody's correct. In that, um, once we got our first grant, actually, we have two grants for that project covering probably about 95% of the total cost of about 3 million. The, uh, reached out to our consultant that helped us with the setup, our development fees and, uh, that the standard process is we wait till the project's done, should be done the end of 2026. So in the winter, spring of 2027, we would, uh, redo our development, uh, fees and this would, uh, come out except for 5%.
Thank you. So I guess the question is, do you want to put that motion forward now or do you want to wait until we do the automatic review later on? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Charlebois?
I think your motion is bangline. But like, but it won't happen as Deputy Mayor Fields said, it won't happen until March, April of 2027.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Is that, oh, Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Yeah, and that is for the southwest quadrant, which are not building homes right now yet, so there is a time.
Right.
For that.
There is.
Yes. Okay, yeah.
Any other questions from council? Okay, um, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to bylaws. And we do have, uh, uh, a couple of options for council. We will deal with the, uh, bylaws separately. And, uh, the first one for the, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead of you maybe, but there is two options and I would like to move that we look at option B.
Okay, I'll just go through this first and then I'll come back to you. I just want to make it clear to council. So the first one we're doing is the official plan amendment. Uh, council's given a choice of A and B. It's been moved by Joel Field that we adopt option B. I'll need a seconder for that, please, that we adopt B, seconded by councillor Patel. Any discussion from council?
Uh, councillor Welsh, your worship.
Councillor Welsh, go ahead.
Um, I have a few notes here, so please bear with me. Um, development at any cost is not good planning or responsible development. The county of Lampden OP developed in 2017, 2018. Town of Petrolia OP 2016 and zoning bylaw 2017 did designate this as a significant woodlot. In fact, the town of Petrolia was, um, I guess, authorized by the county to declare this a significant woodlot. Um, there were, uh, the original OPA for this in 2021, I believe it was, January. Uh, there were 500 signatures on a petition that was presented to council at the first attempt for this. I have received no resident comments in favor of the woodlot removal and many messages, calls and communications opposed to this amend, these amendments. Um, for various reasons in the town official plan, uh, highly vulnerable aquifer and significant groundwater recharge area, just, just to name those two. Um, I would be opposed to this amendment. The afforestation that they've talked about that is unlikely to be successful as it's in the Bear Creek floodplain and we all know what that looks like. Um, the same species and the endangered flora species and that flourish in woodland will not grow in a floodplain and trees grow where conditions are suitable. Um, the EIS did confirm significant wildlife habitat. Much data from the EIS was collected five or more years ago and, um, possibly has changed since then. And in the Natural Heritage Reference Manual, woodlands that meet a suggested minimum standard for any one of the criteria listed in a table there, 7.2, should be considered significant. This woodland meets almost all of the criteria in that particular table. There was an option suggested to me by a resident that perhaps a utilities corridor could be made through the woodlot, disturbing as little as possible to enable the north piece at the end of Joe Street to be developed. I remain unconvinced that there will be no negative impact. You cannot remove a significant portion of a woodlot habitat and not have a negative impact. Those are my notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion from council?
Yeah, I'd like to comment.
Hi, go ahead.
Um, and I, and I just spent some time reading the MT EIS report and there was really one clause in there that it's really got me thinking about, you know, and challenging my decision on this and I, and I'll just read it for everyone in case they didn't spend too much time reading EIS and it's from the peer review section where it says, "From a high-level environmental planning and landscape ecology perspective, if compensated at a higher ratio than removed slash lost, the concept of removing a small portion of the woodlot wetlands from an isolated patch to be reestablished in an area connected to an existing NHS has the potential to result in a local and landscape-level desirable outcomes, including net benefit for natural heritage." And the key word there to me really is potential. There's nothing in the EIS or the MT report that says it will be successful. There's no documentation, no reports to saying that we can actually do this and it will be a successful result. So that's really what's challenged my decision on, on this. So I, I don't think at this point, without some further reports saying that we can see this happening and it will be successful, I could support, uh, taking down the woodlot.
I think this has been going on for such a long time. I'd certainly like to put this to rest. Deputy Mayor Field.
Um, through you, um, just to those comments, I, I, I don't think that they would be any report that would guarantee success. Um, because there's so many variables that, you know, I, I believe that it's, um, we anticipate success, we're hoping for success. We can't guarantee success, no matter what. I don't think there would ever be a report that says we guarantee that these trees will grow and that they will be successful. Um, I would really hope that they would and, uh, you know, I, some people have said that they wouldn't grow in, um, a floodplain. Uh, we do have a floodplain that has some very successful trees growing in it um, that were planted a number of years on the north side of Bridgeview. Um, I, I believe trees could. Hopefully will, but I, I don't think we can ever guarantee that it's going to be fully successful.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from council? Okay, I'm going to call the vote. We have a motion before you regarding option B regarding the official plan amendment. Moved by deputy mayor field, seconded by coun, coun, um, sorry, councillor Patel. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? You. And I'm in favor. So that's 3-2. That motion will carry. That'll take us to the rezoning. We have, uh, uh, an option there for A and B. I see, uh, deputy mayor field has already recommended option B. I'll need a second to put that on the floor for discussion.
Oh, I can't, okay.
I need a seconder. That's regarding the zoning amendment. Seconded by councillor Welsh.
Could I ask for a recorded vote, please?
Okay, councillor Welsh has requested a recorded vote on the zoning amendment regarding option B of the bylaw for the first and second reading. Any other discussion before we have the recorded vote? If not, I'll ask, uh, Mrs. Pearson for the recorded vote, please.
Excellent. So the motion, sorry. The motion for the recorded vote is that bylaw option B be read a third, or sorry, a first and second time and be numbered as bylaw 37 of 2025. So as the process goes, the mover will vote last, um, and second last, and the mayor votes last. So, um, and those obviously that are not here with us this evening are not able to vote. So that includes councillor clerk and councillor O'Hara. Uh, so in alphabetical order, councillor Hyatt, for or against?
Against.
Councillor Patel, for or against? For. Councillor Welsh, for or against?
Against.
Deputy Mayor Field, for or against?
For.
Uh, Mayor Lucely, that is 2-2, for or against?
I'm for.
And that passes 5 to 2.
Alright, thank you. That motion carries.
That carries, yes, thank you.
Uh, uh, need a motion to have the, uh, last bylaw, which is our, our mop-up bylaw, which is the bylaw to confirm the motions and resolutions. So I'll need a move and a second to move by councillor, deputy mayor field, seconded by. Need a seconder for the resolution, seconded by councillor Patel. Any discussion regarding the motion? To adopt the motions? Bylaws? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Of approving that bylaw? Okay, and I'll have a, I need a motion now to have all three bylaws read, finally signed, sealed and numbered. I'll need a mover and a second to approve all three bylaws. Moved by deputy mayor field, seconded by councillor Patel. And I'll ask the clerk to read those motions, please.
And that is bylaw number 36 of 2025, being an official plan amendment for Country View Estates, phases four to eight. Be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number 37 of 2025, being a zoning bylaw amendment for Country View Estates, phases four to eight, be read a third time and finally passed. And that bylaw number 38 of 2025, being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to confirm the resolutions and motions of the council of the town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including November 10th, 2025, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. And again, just before adjournment, I don't want, again, to remind council regarding the, uh, November 11th service at the Senate House, as previously stated by, uh, by Larissa. And to remind you to be there at 10:50. And I also, uh, want to remind council and those that have a ticket for the Remembrance Day dinner and service tomorrow night. And I want to finish by, um, thanking Trevor for his service to the town over the last few years. Wish you the very best, but thank you for your involvement with the town of Petrolia.
Thank you.
And, okay, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Hyatt, seconded by deputy mayor field. Any discussion to the time? All those in favor? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.